That's when we're supposed to.
Okay, I'm gonna try to-
We need to, we need, we need to get the meeting going.
So, we're, we're high, we're all at the Zoom meeting. Okay, I'm up. Okay.
Are they trying to get in?
They're trying, she's trying to get in, Flo, she's looking at the tiny URL and typing that in.
Oh, no, she's gotta go, tell her to go to the town of Columbia.
Okay, Elizabeth, can you go to the town of Columbia, it's columbiacity.org, go to the website. If you go to the website, okay, what does she do next, Flo?
And she clicks on boards and commissions and looks through the zoning department.
Okay, so click on boards and commissions. Okay, do you see something for zoning board of appeals?
The last one on the list.
It should be the last one on the list, yeah, so open that.
Open that, and then click on the documents for minutes.
Let's click on documents and minutes. Okay.
And then she should see the link to the right.
Documents and minutes. Yeah. When she click, do you see a link? Okay. That's okay. Yeah, Flo.
Yeah.
Yeah, zoning, yeah, zoning board of appeals.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes. Flo, once she gets into minutes and agendas, is the, where's the link there?
She has to click on ZBA documents.
She clicked ZB.
And then, then the link is to the right of that.
Wait, the link is, you see it, okay. All right. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, do you see her in the waiting room?
I'm gonna admit her now.
Okay. You're welcome. Oh, good, okay, bye. No problem, bye.
There she is. Okay.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, we can see you and hear you.
Hey, great, let me put you guys full screen.
We lost Carol.
No, I'm right here, or maybe-
She's there.
Yes.
Oh, there's both.
Right next to you.
Okay. Okay, are we ready then?
Sorry, sorry, everybody, I should've, I should've done this sooner and not waited till the last minute.
That's okay, that's okay, it's, it's difficult for us to.
Yeah.
So, so we are ready to start?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I am.
Okay, then at this point, I'm gonna open the regular meeting for Thursday, December 17th, 2020, for the town of Columbia zoning board of appeals. Just wanna let everybody know, this is a virtual meeting and we are operating under the following procedures. The session is being both videoed and audio recorded. Attendees, commissioners, and staff will generally remain on view except when speaking or voting. Okay, we'll call it over, I'd like to have all the zoning members, just please state their names so that we have it for the record. This is Joe Narco, who's the chairman.
Carol Williamson, vice chair.
Bill Patron.
Is Peck.
Ed DiGiovanni.
Dave Holcroft.
And now, just for the record, we'd like to welcome Dave, Mr. Holcroft, to our, our soiree. And, welcome aboard.
Do you mind?
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Changes, additions to the agenda, anybody?
No.
Nope. Okay, and we'd like to have an approval or, or a vote, or, or a motion to approve the regular minutes of October 22nd, 2020.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of October 22nd, 2020.
I second.
Any discussion from anybody, changes, something they saw that was wrong? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Audience of citizens, comments, or, or matters not on the agenda, I don't think there's anybody here other than us and the applicant, so.
Right.
Then we shall suspend the regular meeting at this point. And I'd like to open the public hearing, ZBA 2021-03. Application of James, is it Saeta?
Saeta.
Am I correct in saying that? Saeta. For Elizabeth Thomas, owner for a variance of 35 Hunt Road, Sessors Map 35, Lot 19, LCR zone. Lot area is 1.01 acres. Purpose of the application is to add a garage with living space. And action required by the ZBA is a variance for distance to the property line. The owner is Elizabeth Thomas, 35 Hunt Road, which is where the property is looking for a variance. We have all abutting landowner notices. Connie?
Flo, do you know if we received those, because I haven't been in the office, so I'm going to-
I have not received them, that I know of, the last time I checked.
Elizabeth, can you respond to that, did you turn in the notices for the abutting landowners?
Mailed them, yeah.
I mailed them.
You mailed them, but you were required to send the notices to the town.
You're talking about these.
Right, and we were supposed to get those and receive those at the town.
Okay, well, obviously I did not, they're here in my hand.
How many are there?
There was, um, there were, I don't know, 14 of them. One.
Those are all, those all have to be signed by the landowners?
No, well, those are sent by the landowner, we don't require a return receipt, we just require a receipt from the post office, which is exactly what Elizabeth had in her hand, and I know I spoke with the person who sent them for her, so those are the receipts.
Okay, so then they are, they are available.
Yeah, there's 11 of them.
Okay, and that's-
All right.
Those addresses that were confirmed by myself, it was a friend of yours that sent those, correct? Elizabeth?
Yes.
Yes, I was speaking to her when she was doing that.
Yes.
Uh, they should be, they should be forwarded over to the town, I would imagine, for the file.
I will, I will bring them tomorrow, how's that?
That's, that's fine, that's fine.
Yes.
Thank you.
Put them in our lockbox, I don't know if anybody will be in the office because of the snow, but there's a box out front.
Okay, I will put them in an envelope and put them in the lockbox.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there was another part of this application is a, it was addressed to Joseph Narco, who's ZBA chairman, town of Columbia, from Elizabeth Thomas. I've been a homeowner at 35 Hunt Road in Columbia since 1983, as I, as a 63-year-old woman with relapsing, limited, multiple sclerosis, I would like to add and attach two-car garage and breezeway for my house to provide protection against inclement weather. In recent years, my age and disability have made it more difficult for me to navigate in snow and ice. A friend also lives with me, she helps me out as a caregiver when necessary, I would use the second bay, she's 69 years old. Due to the unique nature of my property, I am requesting a variance of setback requirements for the side property. My lot is steeply sloped from the street on up to the house with many ledge outcroppings. The house was built in 1970s and was not centered on the site, possibly due to the placement of septic, which is on the opposite side of where we'd like to build the garage. As I plan to remain in this house for many years, a garage for two cars would accommodate the expected progression of my disability, as well a breezy would allow for anticipated installation of a chairlift into the house. If that becomes a necessity in the future, I would feel more safe and comfortable, particularly in the winter months. I appreciate your time and consideration, thank you, Elizabeth Thomas. And there were drawings of the garage that were attached to this file, and they were, there's a plot plan showing the, the house. And for the record, there's, she's asking for a variance from side yard requirements from 20 feet to 10 foot 4, to add the breezeway and the two-car garage. There are also pictures, I would, I would assume everybody got pictures of the site, and those of you who were able to go there and look at it, can verify some of the things that were mentioned before in regards to topography and outcrops, and, you know, where the house is located on the, sort of, to two-thirds of the way over on the, on the property. Couple of things that I want to add, just so the applicant understands what we, what we are doing here, this is a variance from the, from the town and zoning regulations. And the state of Connecticut gives, gives the zoning board of appeals the power to determine and vary the application of zoning laws, ordinance, or regulations in harmony with their general purpose and intent, with due consideration for conserving the public healthy, safety, convenience, welfare, property values solely with respect to a parcel of land where owing to conditions especially affecting such parcel, but not affecting generally the district which is situated. It should be remembered that section 8.7 of Connecticut general statutes requires that whenever the zoning board of appeals grants or denies any variance in the zoning regulation, that we must specifically point out the, the regulation, and also, if it's varied, describe specifically the exceptional difficulty or unusual hardship on which its decision is based. So, you know, we have to look at this with the laws that are provided to us. The zoning board of appeals has the power to grant a variance where the two basic conditions are satisfied. The variance must be shown not to affect, affect substantially the comprehensive plan, and two, adherence to the strict letter of the zoning ordinance must be shown to cause unusual hardship or necessary to carrying out the general purpose of the zoning plan. Couple more notes. It is well settled that the hardship must be different in kind from the generally affecting properties in the same zoning district, and must arise directly out of the application of the ordinance to the circumstances or conditions beyond the control of the applicant. Self-inflicted or self-created hardships are never considered proper grounds for a variance. The granting of variance must be reserved to those situations involving, again, exceptional, unusual circumstances. That it would be to the applicant's financial advantage to secure the variance, doesn't warrant a reduction. Ordinarily, financial loss doesn't constitute it. Disappointment in use of the property does not constitute exceptional addition, difficulty, or unusual hardship. And a variance should not be granted unless it's in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. This is out of the Burns book, it's a little bible that we have. Thomas Burns, which helps us decide and helps us decipher what is required when, when, when we have a variance. It has to, you know, it has to be specifically to that. Now, this is Thomas. You're, you're speaking in for yourself, I would imagine, here?
Yes.
Okay, you wanna add to this? You know, we're looking at your piece of property, you're looking for a variance of more than half of the side yard requirement. And we have to find a reason that, if we're to grant a variance, you know, we have to find, you know, there's an exceptional difficulty in this property for us to allow, you know, relaxation of the zoning laws.
I, I guess-
I mean, do you, did you, did you understand my terminology that I was reading you out of this book? Like, you know, I really, you know, I always try to make sure that everybody understands, you know, what we are doing here. You know, we, we can't make a decision based on how we feel about something, we have to base, base our decision on, on what, what the zoning laws are and what, and what allows us to grant a variance.
Well, you know, in the past, it hasn't been as much of an issue because I was married and we didn't stay up here in the snow and the ice in the wintertime. We would go south, and now I am, uh, single and here all year round, and, you know, even last year being a relatively warm year was still kind of difficult for me. When I have a relapse with EMS, I need a, I need to use a cane, I have terrible balance issues, and I took a couple of bad spills last year, and, you know, started this process quite a long time ago, hoping that I would have something in place this winter, but that's, that's not to be, and that's okay. But, you know, down, down south where we were, we had a, we had a, an elevator, not an elevator, but a- the chair thing, yeah, the stairs.
Chairlift on stairs, yeah.
You know, but the, you know, it was, it was an outs, it was able to be done outside. And, you know, that's how I got up into the house, because it was up on stilts. You know, here, it's, you know, it's a matter of, without the breezeway, there's, I don't know where you would put a-
No way to put a stairs, unless you had it inside.
You know, so, um, you know, MS, my MS is, you know, it's a progressive disease, it's not gonna get better, it's only gonna get worse. And I would like to be able to stay here if I, you know, I'm, I, I, I think it would be very difficult for me to stay here with, without this. You know, I don't know what else to say.
Is there any correspondence from anybody, from the abutting landowner, to the left of her house?
Nothing, nothing at all, no.
No.
Nothing at all?
Nobody has said anything.
And, and you know, what's interesting is there's a fence between our two properties, which gives me more than enough room. You know, I didn't even put the fence up, I guess, you know, my neighbor did. And it gives me more than enough room, when I saw what the actual-
Yeah.
-property was, I was shocked.
We actually thought that that was the property line until we had Mr. Holstrom come and do the survey and found out it wasn't. So, and we can reduce the amount of variance that we're looking for by a foot, we can cut the size of it down by one foot, that'll put us down and just asking for a nine-foot variance, I don't know if that'll help or not.
I have a question, Joe, isn't the new regulations, or Connie, one of the other, state that the maximum, or the minimum boundary separation has to be 12 and a half feet?
No, I don't, we have the, for the non-conforming lots, the smallest that we allow without a variance, that I could just approve as the zoning enforcement officer, depending on the lot size, the, the smallest we have for a side yard is 15 feet. And that's for a much smaller lot than that, so, that doesn't impact this, there's some, there's regulations that have to do with a shed that would allow you to reduce the setback by half of the standard, which would be 12 and a half feet, but that's all-
That's what I was thinking.
That's probably what you're thinking about, that's for a 120 square feet or less.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would like to ask a question, Elizabeth, going back to your comment about the fence that was put up, is the fence on the property line, or is it more on the next-door neighbor's property?
It, it actually winds up being on the neighbor's property. Even though they're the ones who put it up, it, it does wind up on their property. You know, it's, and I've been here over, you know, almost 35 years, I, you know, I just thought that I had more space on that side, you know, on the left side of my house, until the surveyor had to come out because I couldn't find my things.
Couldn't find the pegs.
The pegs, so, you know, I had to pay $1,600 to a surveyor to come out and tell me I had a lot less space over there than I thought.
And we do not have any correspondence from the next, from the, was it the Booker's?
The Booker's, it would be the Booker's.
Yeah.
They, they did not respond. Notice that goes out to them, tells them about the variance, it tells them they can attend this meeting, and it tells them they can send correspondence in, to the town hall that would have to be received up until today. So, the only issue with that would be that the town was closed today, so, if something was received in the lockbox today, there would be no way for us to know about it. But the notices did go out a while ago, so typically people call us or send something in right away if they, either in support or if they have an objection.
Yeah, well, I, I'm concerned that maybe there might be something. And not only that, I've, have you had any thoughts? Well, I'm having trouble finding a variance here, honestly.
Well, there's the hardship of our health.
Yeah, I know, but-
And the hardship of the lot.
But the thing is, it's not, that's not grounds for variance, because the hardship, the variance goes with the property. You know, if they were talking, if they were talking about building a, a ramp that was encroaching on the side yard or front yard or side yard, you know, th, there'd be no issue with that, because eventually the ramp would go away. You know, we, if, if we grant a variance, the grant, the variance is, goes with the property, and it's there forever.
Yep.
Property is all, nothing but ledge. It's not, you can't-
It, it's nothing but ledge, I'm amazed there was that flat area there to be able to build a garage.
Right, just at the end of the driveway is, is exactly where the garage would go.
Let me, let me ask you this, you know, you're asking for a huge variance here, you know, you're, you're, you're talking about reducing it more than half, or, or half. The breezeway, is it absolutely necessary?
The only way to get up into the house, once you put, once you're in the garage, then there's a door that goes to the breezeway, which is totally enclosed, where the, where she can put the electric chair, and that goes up into the house, into the main house, without having to go around to the front of the house and outside and go in the front door. I mean, that's the main purpose for this whole thing.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah.
And then they can come in with the cars with their groceries and not have to be out in the snow, carrying groceries and stuff, they come straight from the garage into the breezeway area and up into the house.
Well, I'm sorry, but, you know, carrying groceries from outside into the house doesn't constitute grounds for allowing a variance of this size.
I understand that, but there's also, has to be a health issue here somewheres.
Well, um-
There's another way to do this. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to figure a way to do this, but I, I'm having some great difficulties.
There is another way to get a, a ramp in, though, with a 24-foot wide garage, you can, you would have room to do two cars and a ramp inside the garage, and that would give you the ability to eliminate the breezeway, if that was, what's the sticking point.
Well, it's more, more than that.
Or go with a one-car garage, which is another option. I mean, it's not what you're looking for, I understand, but, you know, given the property that you have, you know, that might be something you have to consider.
So, if we cut that, if we were to cut the garage size down to 20 feet instead of 24, that would reduce, make it less than half of what we're asking for.
That's correct.
Yep.
Right? Because I can squeeze the 20, I can squeeze two cars in a 20-foot garage. And still have her breezeway, and that would add two more feet to what the, you know, less of what the variance we're looking for. We'd be, we'd be under half then.
So what size would the garage be then?
We would make it 20 feet.
20 feet?
20 by 20, or 20 by 24?
And then the breezeway would be alongside of it, but we're actually taking two feet away from one side of the garage.
You'd be taking four feet.
Four feet away.
Four feet away, if you make it 24 feet, 20 feet.
I meant to say 22, I meant to say 22.
Wait a minute, what, what are you saying then, Jim? Instead of 20 by 20, what are you saying?
Well, they're saying the garage is 20, 24 by 24, which-
Right, and then you just said 20 by 20.
So then we, we would cut it down to 20 by 20, the garage-
I think you're mixing things up, I'm sorry to jump in, but you said if you're reducing what you're asking for by two feet, I think, Jim, you're saying you would cut it down to 22 feet wide by 24 feet deep.
Let me get my, my drawing in front of you.
You need it like, you have it?
Okay, you have the drawing of the two garage doors? In front of you?
Yeah, I've, I've seen those.
Yep.
Okay, you see 24 feet across the garage itself? Not the breezeway, but just the garage area?
Yep.
Yep.
That's what I would cut down to 20 feet.
Yeah. I have an 18-foot wide solid steel garage door, and got rid of that post in the middle between the two garage doors. It makes it A, easier to get in and out of the garage, and it also, you can make a smaller garage that way.
Correct.
And still fit two cars.
Still fit two cars.
And so now the offset is 14.4?
I believe so.
At the closest point, that would make it 14.1.
And, and the reg is 20?
Correct.
Correct, yep. So it would be a six-foot variance.
That works for me.
I, I don't have any more input on this, other than I, I, I just think we, we have to come up with the variance, we have to come up with the hardship here. Reducing it is, is definitely helpful, it's gonna give, it's gonna give some additional footage to the side yard.
And, and can I just say something, you know, it's, it's not just a matter of groceries. You know, it's a, it's a matter of, you know, it's a matter of being able to feel safe coming in and out of my house.
I, I totally, and I, I, I feel for you very, very much, but we're, we're bound by the laws. You know, how we feel about something, you know, it comes to play a little bit, but we're still bound by what is required by the state of Connecticut and-
Is there anything-
And allowing a variance.
Yeah, that I could, you know, pursue if I had to?
I, I, can I jump in and just say there are-
Absolutely.
On my, the memorandum that didn't get to you, that, that things that, that qualities of the site that I felt presented a hardship included the very steep slope front yard, because it slopes up dramatically from the street, which any, I think- included the very steep slope front yard because it slopes up dramatically from the street, which any, I think a lot of the members saw that. And there's ledge there. So you could not put a garage in the front. And then to put it in the back, you can't do that because of the well and the setback required. And then to put it on the other side of the house, you have the septic system on the right side of the house. So the, the slope, the ledge, the location of the septic and the well are all factors that make this site very challenging and.
I clouded today. I know how challenging it is.
So those are the, the things jumping in that typically we look at. It's things with the site that make the lot a hardship for, for placement of structures. So that, those were just things that I looked at. I don't know if the commission would consider those or not, but I wanted to let you know.
But, you know, my, my take on that is that those are considerations, but that's a consideration for a twenty-four foot or even a twenty-foot wide, you know, addition here. Now, the question is, because of the zoning laws, will you have to be satisfied with a one car garage? I mean, again, as, as Joe said, I mean, there are limitations to, you know, what we can do, given the restrictions there are and, and even factoring those things in. Are there other options? As Connie said, you know, we can look, you know, at the front and the back, but we also, you'd have to consider, you know, what would be ideal for you and what you want. You know, you still could get some satisfaction in terms of having the ability to pull into a garage and have the breezeway and such, but you might have to give up something, you know, and not be the two car garage. So that might be.
Well, if it was just me, a, a one car garage would, you know, I'd be fine with that. You know, I, I do, like I said in the letter, I, I have a friend who helps me when I'm having a relapse. You know, she's going to be seventy next year and, you know, I hate to leave her out in the cold, you know, or, or anybody who might be helping me. You know.
I, I understand.
Yeah.
I, I totally understand too, but I just, the variance part of this is just difficult for me.
As Joe said, you know, when we make a, when we, you know, make a, a variance, it goes with the property in perpetuity. So long after you have moved out of the house, you know, we have changed that property forever, essentially. So, I mean, that's why there are.
And we're going to go back.
There's a bar.
I'll, I'll, I'll be here forever. Paying, paying my Columbia taxes with a big smile on my face.
I have a question for you. Does your caretaker do the driving when you have her there, when you're having a remitting, relapsing episode?
Yeah, usually.
Is it possible for you to park your car outside? Do you have a little turnaround there? And not use it when you are having an episode? And when you're not having an episode, your caretaker's car goes outside? Is she there all the time? Maybe that's.
Really difficult when it's snowing because you have to put the snow in that turnaround. When you have, when you walk off the end of this driveway with any kind of a garage, one, one car or two car, the snow has to go into that turnaround. So if her car is in the turnaround, then there's no place to put the snow. And you know how this hill is on this driveway.
Yeah, it's terrible.
Yeah, it's really terrible.
So it'd be, it'd be nothing but a nightmare.
Funny, those things you don't think about when you're young and buying your first house. That driveway didn't bother me at all.
Okay, any, any other questions? Anybody? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
I'll second.
Somebody wants? Any discussion, anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay. We will resume the regular meeting at this point. And our new business is this application for Elizabeth Thomas for a variance at thirty-five Hunt Road, Columbia, Connecticut, accessories map zero three five lot nineteen in the LCR zone. Variance requested for the reduction of the side yard setback requirement of non-conforming lot from twenty feet, am I correct, going to fourteen feet, four inches or fourteen feet?
Fourteen.
Add a breezeway. Right.
Fourteen feet, four inches, right?
Yes.
Right. Add a breezeway and two car garage with living space above the existing single family dwelling.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept the application at thirty-five Hunt Road for a variance to fourteen feet, four inches for the addition of a two car garage and breezeway.
And you want to add what the?
Oh, the hardship is the presence of the ledge and the topography, the steepness of the lot.
Somebody want to second that?
You can't second it.
No, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
Has to be a member.
I'll second it.
And that was who?
Bill.
Bill. Bill. Mr. Patrone. Thank you, Mr. Patrone. Okay, discussion, everybody? I mean, does everybody agree that that is inadequate for a variance? Because we are going to take this to a vote and they need four affirmative votes.
My, my only concern was that we got no response from the next door neighbor. And are we just to assume that they're in favor of this since they did not respond?
It's not uncommon to not get a response from a butters.
Yeah, and, you know, they're, they're, they're given the opportunity by those, by those, you know, registered letters. I would think that, you know, we have to go by what we have.
They have fifteen days to appeal this. If you, if you approve it, have fifteen days to appeal it.
Okay.
So we have a motion to approve the variance for fourteen foot, four inches. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
So it's, want to oppose?
So just Keith.
All right, we, it's, it's approved. We have, I will say this one. We have granted variances based on topography and outcrops of ledge in the past on, on a number of times. So I don't think we'd be out of bounds from what, what the zoning board of appeals, the town of Columbia has done in the past. So, just so everybody knows. There is a fifteen day waiting period for somebody to appeal our decision. And that is, is that, am I correct? That's after it's posted?
Yes, after the notice goes in the paper.
Right. So, and do they have to come down, do they have to come down and sign that in order to get it in the paper?
No, they do not.
No?
Actually, Flo, do we put it in the paper or do we just put it on the website now with the new COVID regs?
We leave it to the website only.
Okay. So it's advertised on the website. That's in accordance with the governor's proclamation having to do with meetings and the COVID. So it will be posted on our website in the next couple of days?
Oh, yes.
Okay. And then fifteen days from the day it's posted on the website, somebody can object to it. And then once that time period passes, then I type up the variance. The chairman, Joe Narco, it signs the variance. And then Elizabeth, you would need to come to the town hall and record the variance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, election of officers. We are moving on to our rest of our meeting.
Okay.
All right.
Bye.
Bye. Elizabeth, if you have any questions, feel free to email me. I've been working remotely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I was muted before, so I just want to say thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time, appreciate your efforts for the town of Columbia. Good night.
Good night.
Good night now.
Good night.
Good night.
All right. New business item number two is election of officers.
I nominate Joe Narco.
Please don't.
Sure.
I second it.
In fact, I renominate everyone, except we do need a secretary, don't we? Or?
We do. Yes, we do.
We do, okay.
Yep. I don't know what for, but we do need one.
I have a comment. Bill, have you? Are you still in the zoning board committee? Because your term ended in November.
Who said?
What? Who? What? November twenty-third, I sent his last day, well, I was told by the town clerk that his term ended on November twenty-third. Joe? Joe, no, Bill. Bill.
Oh, mine.
Bill.
Oh, I don't know. Well, that could be problematic for that vote we just took.
One of the four people.
I got the meeting minutes and, and, no, I don't keep up with that.
Wow.
Weren't you reelected?
I was.
You were? You took over his slot?
No, I just took up a slot.
Yeah, well, you were, you were always on the, the. Doc.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. And Andrea didn't run, I don't believe.
I was bounced once with same kind of, a.
Don't do that again.
An option, there's someone. I guess they flipped the coin or something. They didn't send you anything.
Let's be honest.
Oh, this, this is an interesting con drum. I think I'm.
Yes, it is. We got a problem here.
Yeah, I'm going to have to check with the town attorney and we might need to, can we carry this meeting over?
Well, we, first thing we're going to have to.
Boy.
If there's, this is, this is a real issue.
Can we re, have Ed be seated for the vacant position?
Well, Ed already voted, didn't.
No, I didn't vote.
Didn't vote.
Oh, yeah, before, yeah.
Wow, we got a real problem here.
I, I don't know how we do this after we close the meeting.
Is there some kind of special back-to-back meeting we could hold? Or can we rescind our vote? Or is there something we can do?
There is no vote if we didn't have four.
Yeah, you didn't have a.
Yeah, never.
Didn't have a quorum.
Can you reopen the meeting and do, do we have enough members? Who didn't vote?
I didn't vote.
Okay. Can you reopen the meeting or not? Legally.
We can't reopen the public hearing.
We can't.
We closed it.
Okay.
Do we need to if we can see?
Technically, if we didn't have four, if we didn't have four members here, we couldn't even open the.
Couldn't even open it.
Public hearing.
Did you have four members?
You have four members, you just didn't have four votes.
We had four members, but we didn't, we didn't seat Ed. We should have.
We have to see Ed.
He was, he was seated for Bill.
Yeah, right.
But why?
Well, there are four votes though, right? Because there's four, there were four people.
Only if we can count Bill and we can't.
Yeah, we can't count Bill, isn't it?
We can't count Bill and.
No, you can't count Joe.
And there has to be four affirmative, there has to be four affirmative votes.
I didn't vote affirmatively, so there was only three affirmative votes.
Exactly, so there, this does not carry.
Did you vote, Joe?
Yes, I did.
Yeah. Affirmatively?
Affirmatively.
Is there an empty slot on the board now? We normally have had seven members.
Yeah, yeah, Bill, you could be sat as a alternate, but not for this meeting. It would have to happen.
Not for this meeting. He has to be sworn in.
He has to be sworn in.
Yep.
Oh, my Lord. Okay.
So, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know. If I was out, then I guess, I don't know, I received a package, so I'm not really sure.
You, did you receive a package? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Received. Oh, no. Okay, you're talking about the package for the meeting.
Yeah, so if I, I mean, I, I don't, I haven't received any correspondence from the town other than receiving this package.
So they don't tell you when you're done?
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Was he on the list for reelection? You or not, were you?
He does.
That sounds like it's probably a, a committee mistake.
That's, well, that's what happened to me.
Yeah, the same thing happened to Ed.
Right.
But the Democratic Town Committee did not nominate you.
They messed up.
On the docket, on the.
I didn't even realize my term was up. It's been that long.
Yeah, you've been there.
When was he up? Flow? November?
I was told November twenty-third.
Yeah.
Okay.
I could have been watching football.
We got a problem here.
Well, perhaps we need to confirm that. You said you've been told. Is that, is that?
Who told you that?
Yeah.
Well, the town clerk's office.
Who's, oh.
Okay, so there must be a way. There must be a way we can look up his appointment and confirm that. And then I think what we need to do, I, we have to redo the meeting, I think.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you want.
Absolutely.
We can do a special meeting and, you know, me.
That works.
Yeah. Right. So I think what I'd like to do first is check what's going on and make sure you, you are not a member anymore. Confirm that with.
I think you need to talk to the town attorney and find out where, what direction we need to go with this.
Right. If he's not a member, then you're right, Joe. I will talk to the town attorney. And I think what we would need to do is that, hopefully we can do a special meeting, but I need to find out.
Because the vote, the vote is null and void. If, if he wasn't a member, the vote is null and void.
Yeah, I, I agree. Yeah.
Because we are two members short at this point, we're supposed to have five members and two alternates.
Right.
He could be reappointed as a member if somehow or another he didn't get on the ballot by the first selectman.
Right.
Which we can do, but it doesn't help with this meeting.
Not with this meeting, but do you want to continue to be on the, on the ZBA? Bill?
We'll give you a bonus.
Yeah, right.
I was here. I was willing to participate.
Yes.
First net raise in your current pay rate.
Right.
Well, let me talk, let me check with the town clerk or Flo, you can check with the town clerk and then I'll talk to the town attorney. And then I think if we can do a special meeting so that we don't have to wait till January, that would probably be better. But I need to find out what our notification requirements are at this point.
Well, it won't be next week.
No. No.
The good news is nobody's traveling, so.
Well, that's true, right?
Yeah.
Well, they couldn't break ground for fifteen days anyway, so.
Right.
Right. Well, they better be notified tomorrow that, that, when you find out from the attorney, that that vote doesn't stand.
I will speak with the attorney tomorrow and I will notify them. Yeah, next week is Christmas and then it's New Year. So I'm thinking it would, if we do a special meeting, it would be in January.
Yep.
Because our regular meeting's the twenty-eighth of January. So.
Well, I guess I'm going to bow out until I hear back from.
Okay.
Someone in town then.
You're not going anywhere, Bill.
I've been unceremoniously dumped.
That was some technical error on the part of the Democratic Town Committee.
Okay.
We've been there before.
Yes, maybe they're practicing for something.
All right.
All right. Well, welcome to your first meeting.
Usually not a circus.
Yeah, right. It's usually not a circus.
Let me make some calls and then I will. Um, let me make some calls and then I will email you all and let you know what the attorney says and how we fix this.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, adjournment?
Adjourn, um, one, one more thing. Connie, could you, uh, ask the first selectman if he knows of anybody who would be willing to be on this committee? Because we're still a person short if we can get Joe back or Bill back on.
Yeah. I will.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, second, or I'll make a motion to adjourn, how's that? Somebody else can second.
I'll, I'll second it.
Uh, Bill will be here all night.
Bill, don't do nothing, he'll be here all night.
All week.
Okay.
All right, thank you, everybody.
All right, guys.
Good night.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Have a, have a good, safe holiday and...
Yeah, happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you.
Running down in your own little corner of the world.
Yeah.
That's right.
Connie, will you stay on with me for a second?
Yes, I will.
Welcome aboard, Dave.
Yeah, welcome aboard. Normally we are not this crazy, we're a lot more...
He's frozen, I think he already left.
He's like, what did I sign up for?
Bye, all.